... operational guidelines, thus creating a fee for permit. H is to consider, discuss, and authorize a contract with Robert Farley to assess and advise on economic development within the city of Kermit. Item I is to consider, discuss, and authorize three, a three-year contract with two, one-year options with McCreary, Vesselka, Bragg, and Allen P.C., which is MBVA for delinquent municipal court fine collections. And finally on that, it's discuss and consider the Kermit Garden Club Celebration of Army Arbor Days 2024. They would like permission to plant a tree within the city of Kermit.
Matt Burtz will put it in.
We're going to say within the city of Kermit.
Okay.
Mayor Council, real quickly, we discovered today that within the item F and G, we need to be withdrawn and considered. The charter states that we have to have two separate readings in order for this ordinance to have heard. And so we probably, this will be, take place as the first reading, so we probably have a separate vote on that one, and then also on G. F will be in the Parks and Recreation Board, and G will be in the one-day food department.
We can take out the word authorize on both of those and still consider and discuss, correct?
Consider, you can actually, yes, consider and discuss, but we still need a motion on it and pass it, but then we have to have a second reading.
Okay.
We generally have plans for another meeting next week where we can finalize it as a second meeting.
Okay, great. So, real quick for council on item F, it was one of the items that I brought before, and I'd like just a brief discussion, and then we do have a citizen here tonight that would like to speak, but what I, what I would like to gain by this Parks and Recreation Board is it's a seven-member board that we can appoint, appointed by the mayor and then approved, of course, by council. This board will basically serve as an advisory, advisory capacity to kind of help us with our parks and any recreational programs that the council and staff may be considering. But what I wanted the board created for is to provide recommendations in planning, development, and the use of parks, facilities, and services within Kermit. We, as a council, are committed to increasing recreational opportunities and beautifying our parks as an effort to improve the quality of life of the Kermit residents. So, if y'all don't mind, and I know us long, Mr. Williams has been here all night, and I think he wants to speak. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
If y'all don't mind, we'll take a moment on that, and then we'll move on. Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Just briefly, I've had the opportunity to work with our youth sports leagues now for about four years. I serve on three different boards. I'm with the T-ball board, the volleyball board, and the basketball board. With those, I'm also representing the parents that are looking to organize and create a soccer, soccer program. With the increased amount of kids that we have in Kermit that are now playing youth sports, primarily right now for T-ball sake, which is where we're at, we've had 214 kids that are playing within our program. And at that moment, we don't have the capacity to provide proper fields for them. We don't have a lot of the necessary structures in place to get them established. My goal has been to work on the past three years, a joint, a joint sports program, multi-sport with an organizational level, as a first step to kind of bridge the gap between the different organizations within Kermit. The Kermit Youth Football League, we have the Cheerleading League, we have, of course, T-ball, the Boys and Girls Basketball, we have volleyball league, we have all these different organizations that are here for the benefit of these kids, but there is no solid structure to keep them together and to provide almost accountability. My goal has been to work with them to, really to, to just emphasize our need for a facility, maybe three or four gyms to be used for basketball and volleyball use, have a couple baseball fields added, so that way we can have tournaments for our leagues, our Bay Group League, and our T-ball, because right now, we're splitting between softball, volleyball, I mean softball, T-ball, and baseball. And for us right now, we don't have the time because we don't have the fields. And we want to give these kids the incentive to pick up the game, to learn, and it benefits our schools as well. I, I don't have much other than the documents that I've made to present to our sports boards. I'm happy to leave this with you guys if you would like to look at it. But on behalf of these boards, I'm just a parent that wants to be involved. I don't like the idea of having to outsource our kids to other programs in others, in other communities. I would love for our kids to be able to have a home for these sports here in Kermit that would not only benefit them, but would benefit our school system in the future to help us be competitive, bring in revenue, and to help us just continue to develop them socially and ask future citizens of the city of Kermit. That's, that's really all I have.
Did you say 214 kids in T-ball or in the baseball organization? Just in T-ball?
Just in T-ball.
Just in T-ball. It's amazing.
Can we ask some questions?
Yes, ma'am, because it's on the agenda.
Okay. So, are you thinking that if you had this facility, that you could host tournaments and bring people into the community?
Yes, ma'am.
In like one-day, two-day events?
Well, right now, the thought is that if we had these tournaments here, they could be multi-days. It could be a one-day special tournament, two or three days. Like our Bay Group League, they go out of state, or out of city to do their tournaments, but that would be something that we could provide here. Same as with basketball, we had our tournaments in La Mesa, and all of that could have been held here, you know, certain tournament games. And we have a lot of travel, baseball, we have a lot of travel, softball leagues that are doing phenomenal. All of those teams have the ability to bring their competition here for tournaments. It opens up the door to kind of do whatever we need it to do. It's, it's, there's a lot to play with if the facilities were there for them.
Okay.
And so, with, with the creation of this Parks and Rec Board and giving us guidance, there is an avenue that I've researched that hotel motel money can be used to contribute to building facilities as well.
Right, right.
So, there's, there's lots of technicalities and different things, but there is, there is an opportunity for that. My, my hope in, in the advisory board was to be able to bring these groups together, as Mr. Williams has discussed, so that we can kind of get them unified to where we can build a Parks and Rec, and the recreation part is not only the sports, but Easter egg hunts, supporting the library and their summer book reading club. All of those kind of things are all part of Movies in the Park, all those kind of things. So, getting some citizen input, I do already have four names of folks that have volunteered to serve on this board, and I, I think it's a, it's a win-win for everybody, but anyway.
Is his name on the board?
Yes, ma'am, he is on, he was our first volunteer.
Okay.
I just want to take the time out right now to thank you for all of your time that you've dedicated to the kids and children of Kermit.
All of you coaches and board members and all that, it's a lot of work.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, if you don't mind, and then I'll share with everybody. Thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, is there any more discussion on any of the other consent agenda items? And I apologize again for being so late, but I wanted to make sure with that being here, we got to speak to them.
Can, can we just discuss, just to go over to the public, now the discussion of what we're doing on G?
On G, yes. Okay, so what we have on that, item G, it's what, what we said was consider, discuss, and authorize ordinance 2402 regulating one-day food permits for vendors, so that we can make sure they all follow the same guidelines. We had a, we had a glitch in the system somewhere back that I think was $750 or $500, $500 for a food truck to come in and set up and sell corn or corn dogs or whatever. So, what this will do, this amendment will amend the current ordinance to allow for a one-day permit at a rate of $75 per day. We're requesting this because we've had vendors reach out for a weekend event, and they don't want to have to purchase the high-dollar permit. This amendment will number, will limit the number of permits that can be issued to a vendor within a 12-month period to three, so they can't do this more than three times within a year. But it just helps kind of bring the one-day to vendors in. They're still subject to the same health, health department laws, food department, and all that stuff.
And this was done in order to protect those vendors that are already here that are paying the $500. So, it allows for the, you know, one-day food vendor for the Cras Bazaar, or the Bunny Bingo that the chamber is going to be bringing in. They've got an event, I believe, in April that they're looking to have some food vendors, but they'll come in, set up for that day, then they leave, and it still protects the businesses of the food vendors that are actually set up here that are paying the $500.
So, when we have our celebration days, do they pay this, the food vendors?
They pay $150 if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, they do? Okay.
It's usually $165.
$165.
Oh, okay.
No more than making up there.
Okay.
So, G was really just to kind of clean up that, that ordinance that, where it was about to arrive.
Mayor, I make the motion that we adopt the ordinance 2401 and 2402.
One second.
Are we passing everything in the consent agenda?
And, I was going to do this, yes, and then.
Yeah, you probably want to go ahead and pass a consent agenda on a separate vote, and then we can take up item F on a vote, and then item G on a vote.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, we accept a consent agenda, eliminating F and G.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items after removing agenda item F and agenda item G. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve agenda item F?
I make the motion to accept item F under number seven, item number seven on the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve agenda item F, which is the approval of ordinance 24 national one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance 2402, which is item G on the agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept item G under number seven on the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2402, which is agenda item G. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you all very much. Okay, we've already done number eight, which was our executive session, and number nine, so we're going to move on to discuss and consider the City of Kermit Board of Adjustments decisions regarding variance requests by MMC LLC for setback requests and zoning variance for a regional commercial on a R1, which is single-family zone, and also variance request by Michelle Real Estate, Mr. Doug Michelle, for a zoning variance C2, which is regional commercial on a manufactured housing zone. You will give some background on that, sir?
Mayor Council, on Tuesday night, the Board of Adjustment met, and they considered these two items. First of all, I want to talk about item A, which is the variance request by MMC LLC, and they actually had two variance requests that they put out there. One of them was for the setback variance, and another was the zoning variance. I can tell you that the Board of Adjustment passed it, I believe it was 5:0?
Yes.
4:0, 4:0 there. We only had four members attend, and they passed it 4:0. What this is, is out on 3:02, you'll see some development taking place where there is a pad that's been laid out, and this company MMC LLC, which you have pictures for, that's the staple one, what that is, is there's going to be a retail store there, and that retail store, MMC will contract with this retail chain, and they end up basically building the facility. They do what they need to with it, they build it, and then they will try to lease it to the retail chain. And that's what you see here. The issue that we have, if you look at those, those pictures, you'll notice that the, the pad that's already there, if you notice that on one of those pictures, you'll see where the front, the foreman's been poured, and it is lined up with the motel that's directly to the west of there, and they lined it up to that. The problem was that there's only like a two-foot setback, and that was required to have a 10-foot setback. So, they missed it by eight feet. One of the pictures that you show, was shown to be the front of the building, the pad, which I believe is the last picture. Now, they would end up having to move and shift everything over eight feet in order to accommodate the 10-foot setback. The reason that they have it set right here, as stated to me by the gentleman from MMC, is because of the fact that they need this clearance in order for their trucks to be able to come in and out to drop off some of the product. And so, because they're not going to be able to go through the alley, and so they're looking at doing that, and so that's the reason they're seeking that, that variance for the eight, for the 10-foot setback. The other setback, or the other variance that they had, was that in the planning and zoning, in our, in our zoning map, this is zoned as single-family residential. It's right off 3:02, but it's zoned single-family, and so they're seeking a variance to go from a single-family to establish it as a regional commercial, and our zoning ordinance has it as regional commercial because of the fact if they believe that this store has a further reach other than just Kermit, it's considered regional commercial, which is a C2. If it's just a local store with the local residents of Kermit, it's considered C1, but we believe that this store would reach out further than just Kermit, and so that's the reason they're looking at a variance of establishing it as a C2. When, when we, they, they kind of did this fairly quickly, and Jose, it was fortunate that he went out there and took a look inside, and he stopped them, and he said, "Wait a second, you can't do this, you can't pour this foundation." You'll notice that in the second picture, they have the rebar already there, and they're about to start pouring concrete, and we tried and held them up and said, "No, you can't do this." Part of state law requires that we notify all property owners within 200 feet of the property line of this, of this particular property, and we have to give them 10 days in which to be able to come to the city and either oppose it or support it, or be indifferent about it, or they could have come to the Board of Adjustment meeting to support it, oppose it, or be indifferent about it. They also have the opportunity to come to council. State law requires that once we send this letter out, they have 10 days to do that. And so, we had a meeting on the 11th day for Board of Adjustment, no one came in to voice any type of opposition or any type of support. Once that was voted on by the Board of Adjustment, state law then requires that we have to take it to the council for final approval, and citizens, I'm sorry, property owners that are within 200 feet have the right to come in again and voice their opinion, and either support it, oppose it, or just make no opinion whatsoever, or just indifferent about it. So, I'm not sure if anybody's here to speak on it, but I can tell you that no one showed up at the Board of Adjustment meeting, and the Board of Adjustment unanimously approved this variance by MMC on a vote of four to zero for the eight, for the 10-foot setback, and the zoning variance from a SF1 to, I'm sorry, to a R1 to a C2. And that's why you have this before you now, because it's the final step for this.
And this kind of opened up another can of worms for you to look into as far as our zoning maps.
Yes, which will be another project that we now have, to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and open this back up and take a look at it. You know, we have, and this is going to be a challenge, because there's going to be some misnomer in the event that we go through there and change anything along some of the major corridors and major arteries of the city, and move it to some type of a commercial, retail-type property that's currently a house. But we do want the citizens to know that if they're currently living there in the Planning and Zoning Commission, if they move it to be a, a retail, commercial property, it'll stay a residential. They don't have to move out, it stays that way. The only time it changes is in the event that they either sell their house, or something happens to, a change of ownership, then it, then at that point in time, we'll resort to the current zoning. But it's my humble opinion that a commercial property, real estate, has got more value than a real estate, than a, than a house, real estate.
Okay, and then item B?
Item B, I'm not sure if Doug has shown up, I sent him a text, but if he may not show up. Okay, I don't read.
Probably a bad.
Yeah. This is the property that's over on North Pine. If you, if you go out on North Pine, going out toward the jail, and I believe I gave you a picture of that one, which is down the long layout, if you go by, you'll, you'll maybe remember this picture, but there is a building there that's got the two bay doors, it's got a Caliche parking lot, and then there's another smaller office that's directly to the south of there. He is trying to rent this out, and he has some prospects for it, but this particular building, it sits on manufactured housing zoning. And so, because of that, he's not able to open it up as a retail business or commercial business because of the fact the way that the zoning is set up. So, Doug Michelle came before Board of Adjustments, and they also approved this four to zero, unanimous vote, and he is seeking a variance to go from a MH, which is manufactured home zoning, to a C2, regional commercial zoning, so that he can go ahead and get people to start renting out that piece of property, and it not be manufactured house, but actually be a, a commercial business.
And the city at one time permitted that building, that commercial building to be built?
At some point in time, yes. And of course, when he came to me, was talking to me about it, and I noticed that it was not zoned property, and I told him, I said, "Doug, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to go through this process, because we want to make sure that we've got everything on the board." And he accepted it, said he understood completely, and so that's the reason you have it before you, but again, as was mentioned earlier, this is again, one of those properties that we would take the planning and zoning to see about a change from manufactured housing to some type of commercial property.
So, the RV park on the other side, is that part of that property as well?
There's an RV park south of there.
Yes.
It's a totally separate piece of property.
Okay.
And then there's another, if you notice on that picture, directly to the left, you'll see some storage sheds, so that is actually out of the zoning also. And then you have a mobile home that's directed on the other side.
Yes.
And I believe my understanding, the gentleman owns that, but the RV park.
The RV park.
That's over there as well, and so. But they have to come to you as a final approval based on state law, and the, both, I've talked with both individuals, and they're, have asked that council go ahead and approve this and uphold the vote of the Board of Adjustment.
Do I hear a motion to uphold the, the vote of the Board of Adjustments on the two agenda items?
I'll make a motion on item number 10 on the agenda, a vote on A and D, to approve them as the Board of Adjustments has recommended.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to agree with the decisions made by the Board of Adjustments on A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
I'll make a second motion, create it?
Create it. Item 11 on the agenda is discuss and consider the City of Kermit Code of Ordinances, Article 10.03 Cemetery, by examining the existing regulations governing the operation and maintenance to reflect accurate and, accurate purpose and scope. So, I, I do have a, a letter from a citizen who was planning on being here and had a family of mercy come out of town, and I'll read that and then let Mike fill in. He said, "I wanted to bring up the flat headstones and how the weather and the city water will deteriorate and fade the stones and the paint faster. My two cents on this topic, if the headstones were allowed to be slanted, six inches down to four inches, it would allow for water to run off. This would allow for the stains, stones to last longer, and the paint would also last longer, giving a better effect in the cemetery. The stone that I'm going to purchase is $5,500, and we would like for, we as a family would like to see it last. Plus, the reason for the flat stone was be able to mow around it. However, there are a lot of people that put metal work and several other items that makes it not as easy to mow around. Personally, the upright headstone would be my preference, but the angled stones will work and last longer." So, anyway, that was from a citizen.
Mayor Council, this is covered for your review, simply set up a discussion item. It's my understanding that this ordinance was passed, I believe, last year, the year before, and there had been some discussion that I've had with some of the council members, wanting to kind of take a look at it. We've had it in place for a while, for a few months, and maybe it's time to begin to start taking a look at it again to see if there's anything we need to change. So, this is simply has a discussion item in the event that the council wants us staff to move forward with possible changes, if they want us to review other cities, how they have their cemetery ordinance currently add, if they would like our city attorney to take a stab at it, trying to implement and incorporate some of the comments made here by council tonight on how we want to look at this cemetery ordinance, or if they simply want to leave it as is and say, "Let's leave it a little bit longer and see what happens down the road." But we brought it to your attention so that you could have some, an opportunity to be able to discuss it and be able to open it up to the public in the event that they want to make comments on this agenda item as well.
You're talking about the new cemetery?
Yes, sir.
If you do that angle, they're not going to be able to mow, it's going to be slammed. You're going to have to raise them, so they have to be mowed around, so you've got the same thing there as you have in the old cemetery.
Well, I think that the rules for the new cemetery should be the same as the old one. There's, it doesn't make sense to have two separate rules, two separate sets of rules. We get confused, we tell the people the wrong thing, then it's a whole thing. I think we should go back to just use, that's my opinion, do we just use?
The same rules.
The same rules for both of them.
Well, you can't, because you've got upright stones in the old cemetery, flat stones in the new cemetery.
Yeah, but I don't see anything wrong with going back to the.
I think if it's your last one, within the headstone space, you should be able to memorialize then however you see fit.
I agree as well.
So, what I'm hearing on this, and just in light of being able to move along, is that we do need to maybe have some more discussion on this.
Can I ask Jose a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Jose, so now, like, y'all are mowing now, or y'all using the big mowers just running over them, or y'all weed eating? What are y'all doing in the new?
In the new, there is mowing all the way across, yes.
Right, there's, there's stuff all over them. That's, that's, that was my question, like.
Okay, every time they bury somebody, they give them a paper with their rules, and other people don't follow them.
Right, right.
So, we do tell them that we're going to remove whatever they put down whenever the mowing's going to start.
Oh, okay.
And right now, we live in the same way, the whole cemetery is, we're going to start having problems, because the run mowers are, whenever they zero turn and all that, sometime they shift the headstone, and they're going to create problems with the family of them.
Yeah, but I don't like the ideal of running over somebody's headstone. I mean, when they're out there mowing and they're going across everybody's headstone, that's disrespectful to me.
Yeah, I think as a council, we need to look at this. The hours of operation have been addressed, the police department's going by now later at night locking the gate, so people have more time to, to visit family loved ones. There's also a rule in there on the selling, not, not of the mausoleum, which I know we had an issue with, selling in order, but I think the, the spaces as well. If, if, yeah, I think, I think I'm right, and we can discuss this later, but we had a, a woman who died, and her daughter wanted the space next to her, but they wouldn't let her buy that space because the ones below it hadn't been sold, and somebody had already taken the spot below her, so that family was going to be separated. When we discuss it, I would like, if they want to buy a block of them, we sell a block of them. But anyway, that, we can do that on discussion, so.
And what you refer to is it, it states that it's being sequential order.
Yes.
It's always sequential order, and that's what we ran into.
So, I think it can still be sequential, but allow them to buy them in advance or some power, we'll discuss on that. So, does anybody want to do anything other than postpone that for future discussion?
How about the visiting hours? It's from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.? Is that all year, all year round, or?
That is the current for the new cemetery. The old, the old one doesn't have gates, so therefore it's.
Our one's 24/7.
Yeah, I.
Can we, can we change that to?
To the old cemetery?
Yeah, the old cemetery, we start finding people that are up to 10.
I, I think we should take the gate off. I don't understand why.
One's open and the other's not.
One's open and one's not.
I think we'll discuss that as well.
So, you think that we, they shouldn't have a gate, or they should have?
No, shouldn't, I mean, the fence around it, yes, but not the gate.
So, we don't, we don't close it?
We don't close the other one.
The new one does close.
The new one's open when we're locking up, the old one's open, you got free range in and out, anything.
Well, except the, the hours that, that y'all state.
Kind of like a park curfew.
We don't have no problems with strangers just going in there, and I've heard a lot of things in the, in the past in regards to witches. I've heard a lot of things in the past in regards to witches going over there and doing their...
I've heard that too.
Their thing. I don't know if that's true, but, I mean, I don't think that should be allowed. I think there should be a fence, a gate, and there should be visiting hours, closing time, and nobody should be in there after closing time.
Well, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to put gates on the old cemetery.
I just had Rodney just...
I mean, we're gonna do, I mean, because I think we need their, there's two cemeteries, but they, we need the same rules.
Yes.
Go ahead, Corina.
For both of them.
I have one question. So you were on the board when y'all did the changes on the cemetery? Other than the mowing, what was our reasoning to change it? Or was it because of the mowing?
Because it was perpetual care. And that's the flat stones. They can be mowed over and weed eaten around where you're not having to go in between. It was just saving on man-hours later.
Okay, so that was the main reason?
For the maintenance. Okay, that's the main thing, boy.
Do y'all mind if we move this to later discussion?
Yes.
Just in light of moving ahead? Okay, so we had no action taken on number 11. Number 12 is discuss and consider. That's why I wanted to get done early, y'all. For the operation of mobile auto repair businesses to ensure safety, environmental protection, and fair business practices. So this, go ahead.
Mayor Council, this, this item was brought to my attention. Councilman Chavez asked me to be able to begin to start taking a look at this, and I've got our city attorney Slater looking at it. But what this is, is a request to begin to start permitting and regulating the mobile auto repair businesses that you see around town. It doesn't necessarily have to be to auto repair. I mean, I think we do have some that are vehicle washing, if we want to go that far. But yeah, tire changing. But what it is, is the ability for us to be able to permanently regulate and have people come in and register with us so we know who they are. But one of the aspects that we really need to try to get a hold of is the environmental protection. If you go around town, you'll see tires laying everywhere. You'll see oil laying everywhere. You'll see parts laying everywhere. And if we, if we know somebody that's out there working, this would give the opportunity for code enforcement or police department to go out, and if they see somebody working, they'll stop, check their permit, and see if they have a permit and Kermit. If they do, great, you're registered, you're legal, you can do anything you need to, but make sure you're disposing of what you have because we know you were here. So this is an effort that we're trying to figure out what we can do to get control. We have some issues going on right now. One of the largest ones that I have that I've been in contact with, TCEQ, and also the regional manager of O'Reilly's. If you go to O'Reilly's, you look behind there, at the dumpster that belongs to O'Reilly, there's oil laying everywhere. And it's become a TCEQ issue. TCEQ now is involved with it. And I've had a conversation with them, we're saying, "Mike, O'Reilly's is trying to do everything that they can, but people are still illegally dumping oil there at their property, and they can't catch them." So this is just an opportunity for us to begin to start having a discussion and find out if there's anything more we need to do of some of the items that they may want to do, or that you may want to take a look at. But I think that, as I said, Councilman Chavez brought this to my attention, and so this is the reason we have it on this agenda to kind of have a, start having an open discussion on it.
Council would agree, we'll put that on for, for future consideration and discussion. Absolutely. Item number 13 on the agenda, discuss and take possible action on strategies for mitigating the problems of the animals roaming in our community, ensuring both their welfare and the safety of residents. And I know we have some folks here that want to speak tonight on that. So I'll welcome anybody from the public that wants to come up on that, and then we'll, we'll move forward from there. How are you?
Thank you so much. Mike, thank you for coming on the city agenda. What happened was Saturday, my daughter, my granddaughter, which is Mrs. Kaylee, she has a kitten that she raised. She's not, she raised her from a kitten. And she was out over by Burt's Hill Park, and two dogs attacked her. They ripped her insides open, and they broke her back. Kaylee had to carry her back from the park. We called, my daughter called the PD. It was on a Saturday, and she left a message. There was a police officer who came down the street, but he didn't bother to stop. So there's something, we have had, I don't know how many dogs running through the park. We have elderly people who try and walk. We have children that play at Burt's Hill Park. And these animals are not strays. They belong to people in the neighborhood. Corina, it's your district. I live in District 3. So something needs to be done before somebody is attacked or killed. So that's the reason that we're here tonight.
I would like to keep in mind that when this police officer drove by, I was covered in blood, and I was in a light pink t-shirt. And he drove by very slowly, and my whole family's outside. And I know he looked at me. I made eye contact with him, and he never stopped. We don't have very many cats, and aren't even with anymore because these dogs, she's not the first one I've gotten a hold of. And when they go on from cats and they move on to children, I don't want anybody else to go through what I went through. I don't want anybody else to lose their baby just because someone's not keeping their dogs where they should be. And I am upset about this, but I know there's something that can be done for my situation. But I do not wish this upon anyone, their child, their animal, anyone, or their elderly. We have very many elderly in my neighborhood, and they can't get out anymore. And that devastates me because they have no one anymore. Getting out and talking to their neighbors is the only way they have to communicate anymore. And they can't even do that. We have a younger gentleman who is handicapped. He loves to walk. He can't ignore it. And if a dog gets a hold of him, there's nothing that can be done.
He's got dancers.
And he lives alone. So I just, I, like I said, I know there's something that can be done for our situation, but I don't want this to happen to anybody else, and these dogs belong to people. They are doing it for sport. This cat, she didn't attack them, and the other cats I have watched, I have seen them do this to kittens. They are just doing it for fun. They're seeing these animals, and they're just chasing them. I understand that animals do revert to that, but once they revert to that natural nature of wanting to chase and take down other living beings, they're gonna be wanted children next. Or if a child is holding a kitten or a puppy at that park, they're not going to stop and not attack the child as well. I just, I don't want a mother to lose her kid just because these animals, and that goes for all the dogs in our neighborhood, and that's just our neighborhood. That doesn't go for the rest of Kermit. I don't know about that, but if it's as bad in our neighborhood, I can't imagine in the bigger parks.
And since we're passing on, everybody's trying to get out.
Right.
They want to walk, they want to ride the bicycles, and they chase. And I know that Governor Abbott passed a tether law. That was for the humane appeal of animals that were being abused. That doesn't mean you let your animals run all over the place. We have a fence. If we can provide a fence, everybody else should be able to do the same thing, be responsible. So we are finding, I know our, we went out to the animal shelter. I know it's full. There is no room. So what you're gonna do with this, it's always been an ongoing situation. It's not changed. But something needs to be done.
If you don't mind, since it says on the agenda, council is free to discuss and ask questions, so if there's anything y'all want to ask these ladies, you're welcome to.
Can I ask you real quickly, on the, the dogs that are attacking, is it the same dogs, or are you saying it's different dogs?
No, it's the same dogs.
So you know it's the same two?
We've got pictures of both of them.
And do you know where they live?
Yes.
And have y'all reported it more than once?
No.
This is your first time?
This is the first time.
But they were given thorough information on the...
In all fairness, since it's a weekend, and evidently, do you have a humane officer who works?
Yes.
They weren't contacted. I don't know why, Heidi.
They weren't contacted.
They were contacted?
And she went and she couldn't find the dog.
She couldn't find it. It's because they put him up. And I can show you the house if you put him.
We know the house, and she had been monitoring the house.
Okay.
But they two know.
Yeah, they've been looking to.
So they two know.
The people shouldn't be allowed to leave in that house. It's horrible. It looks like a mess house. I'm sorry, that's who's living in there.
But if you know, if you know, if they're the owners of that house, can you not...
I don't know.
Ask to go in and see?
We can, but if they tell us no, I can't force my way in.
Right, right.
Right. They have to have...
She can file a complaint.
Yes, I can, and I will.
She can, the girl that her cat got killed can file the complaint. She's the victim.
She can, yes.
But you can file a complaint personally.
Yes, and we can do that tonight.
Okay.
That sounds great. I just wanted to let everybody know, especially before this happens. And I know that it happens in the whole town permit.
Yes.
And I understand why.
Yes.
Because your, your animal shelter is so tiny, and it's completely full.
And we're, we're working on expanding it. We expanded it once.
I know.
And so now we need, we have to take it a second step and expand it again, which we're trying to find ways to do that. And I just want to tell you that I'm very sorry for what you went through. I myself have been bitten by a dog. So I know, you know, I know.
We, we also have an animal shelter committee, and I would like to invite y'all to our meeting so you can be a part of, you know, solutions.
Change, solutions.
Solutions.
We would love to.
And tell your friends, and tell anyone who wants to be a part of this committee, who wants to be hands-on. It's gonna take team city effort because the problem's so big.
Yes.
And I think if we get more hands-on, I mean, hopefully, we can start making a change. But our meeting is gonna be Tuesday here at City Hall at 5:30.
5:30.
Okay.
We'll be here at 5:30.
And I might, you and anybody else.
And you know, anybody that might have, you know, solutions, might, you know, something that we haven't figured out yet, or, you know, y'all may, we're, you know, we'll take any.
And anytime y'all see the animals out in the room, call, call it in. Call it in and let them know where they are.
We will talk.
So last year, we did add a second animal control officer so that we would have people available in the evenings and on weekends, and so that didn't, didn't happen. Or so that wouldn't happen. I drove around also because you and I communicated. I drove around for several hours. I couldn't find them either.
No, because they get in.
And I, yeah, and I sat and watched the house for the longest time, just hoping so I could call chief and say, "They're out."
I'm surprised they didn't call, and you in for a stalker.
I was afraid. I figured I would see somebody. And, but yes, it is an absolute issue we have to continue to address. We started it almost two years ago, a year and a half ago. We're not there yet. It's a problem that everybody has, but I don't care about Odessa or Opakes, or I care about Kermit and our people. There were so many people, elderly people that were walking that day, that I just wanted to tell them, "Go back in your house." But that's their socialization, and we shouldn't force those people to go inside their house because somebody else doesn't maintain their animals. So we're, we're gonna get aggressive. Chief is, is a supporter of this. They don't see them, they can't get them, but I know they're watching the house, and they're just hoping for those dogs to come out. But if you file a complaint, that takes it a different level.
And I'll follow the debate.
I have a kind of question for you, Chief. Like, if, say, we have this program implemented, like the, the shelter, and they have them registered, and we have their name, can... Like, say, like, say she knew the name of the person, and they're already registered in our system, can they be cited if we know that that's them, or is it his word against her word?
The purpose of the complaint.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
It'll be fine.
Make sure y'all take pictures.
We do have pictures.
Pictures of thousands more if you want.
But you, you know, it sounds like you're sure it's he said, she said. So you're looking at that problem all over again. But if the city used to, we had tags, responsible pet owners are gonna want their animals to be taken care of. If they lose them, they're gonna go out to the pound.
But those two dogs don't belong to responsible pet owners. They're not gonna come in and...
See, that's, that's the problem we're having.
Yes, them, it's, everybody's... There was a sheepdog, a husky, a germa shepherd.
Yeah.
There's hounds that are all over. And I know that it's a horrible problem. You can see them at times, and then there's...
You don't see them, yeah.
Right. It's hard to catch.
So Chief, I do have one question, and I hate to put you on the spot tonight, but I just feel like I need to. Today is Thursday, and that happened last Saturday. Have you been contacted by any animal control officer or any member of the police department? That's a problem. It happened on a Saturday. That's no excuse. Crimes happen, things happen. Our citizens have to know that their police department's supportive. And, and to go into Thursday night at 10 minutes till 10, and you still have not been contacted, is an issue. And it's something that, that I'm challenging Chief and city manager Mike to get corrected because that, that doesn't need to happen. And I apologize on behalf of the city that that happened.
Thank you.
Yes.
We appreciate it. We appreciate your time, and we will be there at the meeting.
Right here.
Yes.
Please do, and because we, lots of suggestions helping the ball roll and so...
Yes.
And we'll tell everybody. I don't know if they'll come down or not. That will be best.
Okay.
So thank you all. We appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you so much.
I was suggesting that if they did come to register their dogs and get their dog tags, take a picture of it.
Put it in a database.
But I said the problem is that they don't register.
Yeah.
Everybody registers.
If we could get their dog to do the mugshot, then we could know who it was.
Hey, you gotta do what we're gonna do.
It's, it's a bad idea.
Quick question. I need to, you want us to file a report tonight or wait to come back? He has to finish tomorrow.
What's the easiest for you? You can do it now, or you can do it in the morning?
We'll do, we'll do it now because she'll have to be at the junior on the morning. All right, thank you.
Thank y'all again.
That was my question, like, do you have, maybe if you're registered, and she's a tank, that dog comes on, so when they're registered, can you move on it without them actually?
Yes, yeah, let's file a complaint, and then they can, then that initiates the law enforcement.
Yes.
Okay, so thank y'all for that. Item number 14 on the agenda is a presentation by KNS Solar on implementing electricity and battery savings measures for the City of Kermit. Are y'all welcome? You want to introduce yourself?
Absolutely, and thank you for having me. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is John Kaufman. I'm with KNS Solar. We are based out of Houston, Texas. And I was asked to take a look at the city's billing for electricity. The police, fire, and city hall accounts for about 4% to 4.6% of your total bill, total bill being about $20,000 a month. And for the police, fire, and city hall, these buildings right here, you actually have a rate of 6.8 cents per kilowatt hour. That is amazing. That may be a sweetheart deal, I'm not sure, but that is a great, great price. To put that in perspective, that is half of what I pay as a residential homeowner, and there are some businesses in town that are paying two, three, even four times that amount for, for electric service here in the City of Kermit. So it would be, it, it would not be feasible for the city to, to look at solar just for police, fire, and, and city hall. However, again, that, that represents 4% to 4.6% of your overall bill. I'd love to do some analysis on the rest of the city bill because I, I don't think that it's gonna be 6.8 cents per kilowatt there. But it does bring up a very interesting point of, of what is the city, the police, fire, and city hall doing in the event of an outage? Do you have generators? Is there battery backup? Because that is something that, that we can help with. Nowadays, there are hybrid inverters and battery backup. A hybrid inverter, think of that as the brains of the system. We can actually program those so that it stores up power during off-peak rates, and then during the peak rates, it discharges, runs the building, the home, the, the business at those off-peak rates. And that's called, it's called energy arbitrage, and, and, and peak... I had this one today. Peak shaving. That was from a client out in California that, that they deal with this all the time. So would like to analyze the full bill for the city. And any type of backup that, that the police and fire and city have right now? Generators or battery backup, anything like that?
We have generators.
Generators, okay. The nice thing about the, the hybrid batteries and the hybrid, uh, inverters is in the future, if you decide, uh, to have, uh, solar or EV chargers, and I, I know it's, uh, it's 2024 and six short years, there's going to be 29 automakers that go 100% EVs, electric vehicles. And that can also be a revenue stream for the city if you have, uh, EV chargers out front. Just something to think about there. Also, there is, uh, a number, uh, of items that, that can benefit not only, uh, the city, but also businesses here in, in, in the city of Kermit. Uh, the Inflation Reduction Act, which was passed in August of 2022. It allowed for a 30% direct pay benefit to nonprofits, to school districts, to churches. Uh, some of these entities that, that had no incentive, uh, to go solar in the past, to have battery backup, uh, EV chargers, any of those items. So now at least the city would get a check from the federal government for 30% of the cost. For, uh, businesses, uh, there is also USDA REIT grants, which will cover the cost of about 50% of, of the total cost. We have a number of clients right now that they're having 50% paid for by a grant that you don't pay back. 30% tax credit, 10% tax credit because of the products were made in, in the United States. And then when you add on depreciation of the, uh, of the equipment, they're actually putting money in their pocket, uh, to have solar, to have, uh, battery backup and even EV chargers. You think, well, why is this such a big deal? Couple of weeks ago, AT&T, my phone went down, uh, for about 12 hours and that was just my phone. You've heard of, uh, of terrorist acts where they're shooting into, uh, energy transformers? But think about not having power, whether it's a winter storm, whether it be a wildfire. But not having power with, with solar generation and, and, and battery backup. You are basically off-grid, uh, or you have the capabilities of, of being self-supported, but you're always tied to that grid just, just in case. So, uh, would love to, uh, to run an analysis on the entire bill and see if we can help you. And if we can, be more than happy to tell you, hey, there's nothing we can do. But if we can, there's, there's grant money out there. There's, there's incentives that, that can help you, uh, to, to power, uh, power your city. Any questions?
How do you spell arbitrage?
Arbitrage. A-R-B-I-T-R-A-G-E-L-E.
That's close. Since this is just a discussion item, uh, maybe reach back out to the city manager at a, at a time where y'all could discuss that.
Sounds good.
John, Mr. Kaufman, thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Moving ahead to the bottom of our second page, staff reports, administration reports, uh, financial report, Mr. Mike.
Mary, can you have before you the AP items? I don't know if you have, if you have any discussion, discussion.
I, I didn't, I didn't have anything.
Oh, I have something on the bills.
Okay.
Um, I see that Bobby Sinclair is being listed here.
Bobby Sinclair?
He retired. So who's doing our inspections?
Well, I would say. He retired?
Yes.
He retired from the city, but that's contract, this is contract work, correct?
Yeah, he's working, but he's not retired. No, he's not a wantah hands. He's helping do our permits.
Okay. I was told he, he retired last month from wantah hands. So I didn't know if he's still doing ours on a contract basis.
No, we don't have it on the contract. With his on, uh, oh, we need him on inspections. But he's under contract on that.
I understand that this, these bills that you see here are from the date range of February 7th to March 15th.
Right.
So even if he had retired briefly, he was still there, but he helps us do our permits.
Has he mentioned that he's not going to help us out anymore?
Oh.
Bobby?
What do you mean?
No, he's still helping us.
He's still helping.
Yeah, he's, he's helping us out on everything that we need. Uh, and every time that I ask him a question or I have a problem with any, uh, PCEQ questions, uh, he's been a great help.
Oh, good.
I ran into him last month and he did say he was getting ready to, I think officially retire from wantah hands. Been there 40 years or something. I can't remember.
Yes, I heard he did.
But that he was going to continue to do outside.
Okay. Good to know.
Contract type.
The other thing I had a question on was the MD trucking, $8,000.
Page. MD trucking's on.
Page four.
That was for the PD. That was what we paid to have the, the gravel.
Yes.
Deliver.
Yes, sir. That was for the going into the farms to the firing range.
Okay.
And also around the dog farm. So.
Okay. How many loads?
Ten, ten loads.
Ten loads.
Ten loads. Okay. I went and looked at the range. How many loads there versus how many loads at the animal shelter?
Eight there and two at the shelter.
Okay.
Eight, eight or two?
Eight and two, yes.
Eight and two. Okay. Did we go out for bids on this? Because for 10 loads, that's pretty steep.
Yeah. No, we did not.
Cause everybody else is charging about 600 a load, so.
Yeah, it was just an obvious agreement to bring it in and also breaking the stuff down and coming to spread it.
Okay.
So they spread it as well.
Well, no, they, they just, they get it in and spread out.
I got you. Okay.
Okay.
Are they still doing, is there other jobs they're doing or is that it?
No, no.
No, that's all we have. Now, of course, we can always extend it all the way to 302 if we choose to run that same, uh, gravel there or the fresh market run in.
It's not gravel. It's asphalt milling.
Asphalt milling, I have an idea.
There's also asphalt millings at your house. Are those from the same?
Of course.
At your house?
Yes.
Are those from the same?
Yes.
Okay. Can you provide the council with a receipt for that so that we know that it's not the same because we paid for an extra load by the going rate of everybody else?
An extra load?
Yes, everybody else is charging 600 to 625 a load. We're paying 800 alone, so there should be 11.
Well, he did charge 800. Yes, we just, just bring it over.
Yeah, it was $800 per load and we received 10 loads.
Yeah, but I, I didn't, I didn't get the receipt from him, but I can, I can get one.
Okay. Thank you. That would be helpful. Sure.
I also, I have a que, I saw one and I forgot that I had circled it. Um, so we paid somebody a reward?
Yes. $1,000.
Yeah, I saw that. I didn't, I mean, was that known that you were char, that you were going to give a reward?
It was the day that our officer got assaulted.
Oh, okay.
And we needed to find the fugitive, so we put a $1,000 on it.
Okay.
We received a tip.
Okay. I just, I, I don't know, you know, Crime Stoppers usually advertises and stuff. That's why I was.
Under the tractor supply too, I saw that there's boots. Are we providing boots for every employee or is this a specific case?
I know that on tractor supply, we have the dog farm. I think it's the water boots.
Oh.
And I can, well, it's, and it's a great conversation to, to water boots and buy them. I can tell you this is that, that is one of the things that you will see come from me. There are some requirements that we have for employees to have steel-toed boots, but we expect them to go out and buy it.
Okay.
And I think if we're going to require our employees to purchase certain apparel, then we need to be able to provide the apparel for them. And so you'll see that come in through the budget item in our next fiscal year of, uh, some of the items that we require them to purchase. An item, an apparel for their work. We see you can't do this until you have steel-toed boots and, and I'm using steel-toed boots because that's the most common one. I think that the city needs to be providing the form as far as their apparel. So, but I know that we do actually have water boots also that they're going to purchase. We have them out in the water department. We have, of course, animal control.
Street part or water, super department?
Yes.
Okay.
Just having fun. So the city retreat and planning, that city camp, that retreat, is, is that covers the whole retreat? Is this?
That is just for the consulting portion from lunch consulting. That would not cover the, uh, the hotel meals and dining.
That does not?
No.
So is this like a volunteer that we go or is it, is this the price if one goes or all goes or?
It is, it's just a flat price for the training itself.
And that was a budgeted amount as well, I believe.
We do have a, a budget item, I believe, $19,000 per training. And that includes the force, any training that you go to through TMLA.
Any other questions on financial? Moving on to the recycled report.
Sorry, I don't have nothing for metal ore or cardboard.
Let's try to shorten that meeting.
Yeah. I ain't got nothing.
Staff reports under B, public safety reports. Chief Ramos, police activity?
Police activity, you'll notice that our numbers are pretty level, pretty consistent. We haven't, there's been a slight decrease in, in certain ones and a slight increase in family assaults. Our traffic stops, of course, were down slightly. Citations were down, warnings were down and arrests were down. Overall, calls for service are slightly higher, 60 points. We have four officers, patrol officers right now. I've got three out on medical.
Goodness.
So we have now the lieutenant working day shifts and we have the sergeant working night shifts. So.
Did they all get hurt on the job?
No, can't discuss.
Okay.
Wish you had any questions anytime you can answer, Chief.
Oh, that, that's fine. I just, I didn't know.
Yeah, we can't, if, if it, I don't know if it is or not, if that's kind of a hippe violation, I think.
Not as long as you don't say their name.
And your normal, or your full allotment of staff would be how many again?
15.
15.
We are heading Odessa College next week. They have a class graduating. They announced that they have approximately four individuals that have not been accounted for. So we're going to try to sell our bids, especially our, our recruiting bonus.
Yes.
And now we have our take-home fleet program. So these are things we'll hopefully be able to entice some of these individuals to apply for us. And we do have a couple of applicants that have expressed interest, so I'll have to make some arrangements to see if we can go higher.
All right. Um, how are our trucks coming? Are they ready?
The truck was delivered, the first one and all the equipment was delivered last Thursday. And I was hoping to hear from him today, but I checked my emails about an hour ago and still nothing. So, but he did say it would take roughly around a week each.
Okay.
So as soon as he calls us.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Let's get him soon.
But he was working on other units from other departments that he was, because we had made arrangements prior to. He was, uh, trying to squeeze us in as he's going off.
Right. Okay.
We're hoping to hear when he did, he'll call us and we'll get that one back.
We just shove all of that whatever.
So the one that you brought back, is it in use now or are you waiting?
No, we haven't brought it back yet.
Oh, you haven't brought it back yet?
No, we're waiting for that call.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're waiting for the call for completion on that one and then we'll take him another one and bring it down.
Okay. I thought, I'm sorry. I thought you said you brought one back.
Chief, I know in the past y'all, uh, for Kermit PD is, is utilizing part-time officers. Is that still an option to kind of help you out?
It is and we're trying to recruit there, but, uh, some of these other entities are just beating us. Yeah, I'll just be honest. Financially, they're just.
Yeah.
They're stepping back if they come into the force.
You found a part-time commercial officer grabbing.
Um, trust me, that's one of my, that was one of my go-tos, but a Norfield company picked him up. Made him an offer he couldn't refuse and I couldn't.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah.
Maybe we can grab him some.
Yes.
Moving on to animal control?
Animal control, our numbers are slightly up on the reclaimed, uh, slightly up on the warnings issued. The evertell is, is, uh, slightly down on calls. The good thing we can say is zero dog bites. Everything else is pretty much the average. We're rescue canines were down, so that's a plus. And, uh, surrenders to the rescue themselves is down. One of the things that we, on the intakes is what we've been doing is, like for example, there's, uh, folks that have a dog and they can't be here because they have, they're getting treatment, medical treatment elsewhere. And, uh, so what we're doing is, because we didn't have the room in the shelter, just to take in. We can take in smaller dogs right now, but the bigger dogs, which this one is a bigger dog, we can't just place them in there. So the neighbor has been feeding their dog, but she knows she's not going to be back for a spell because of this medical issue. So what we've done is provided the, the neighbor with dog food. And they're feeding and watering the dog, but maintaining the dog in a secured fenced area for us until we can have room to be able to bring the dog here. And we already have, uh, we have another family that has a, a medium-sized dog. That's a mother, but she's got like nine puppies.
Oh.
So, and if we get rid of the four that we're getting taken care of right now, because it's easier to move a dog that's been spayed or neutered. So if we do those four that we're working on right now, that's 10 dogs and I'm at 11 dogs I have to take in right there to include the mama or nine puppies and that, or the dogs. So if I move out four, I gotta move in 10.
Right.
So it, it's a never-ending problem and I understood what they were saying and I did feel, I feel for them and their cat, right? And we tried, we tried to respond as fast as we could. And one of the questions I should have asked her, which officer was it? Because the only officer that was out in a, in a patrol marked unit was our code officer. Cause Richard's been patrolling in a black tow, that's not marked.
The one I saw was a white tow.
It was a white one?
I don't know who was driving. I wasn't paying attention when they went by me, but it was a white tow.
No, that wouldn't have been, that wouldn't have been.
We made code. I don't know. I really, I should have paid closer attention. I actually thought they had just left the house, uh, because they were right there, but. Okay. Moving on to code?
Code.
Uh, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
In regards to the dogs that come into the shelter, um, we're doing the correct paperwork. We're taking, do we take pictures of the dogs?
Yes.
And then we take dates down when they got impounded and all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, how many dogs do we have, uh, if any, uh, for, uh, to put down?
Right now currently she doesn't have any to put down.
Okay.
She's been able to move a lot of the dogs.
Oh, has she?
Yeah, she's been moving them.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Rescue's been helping us move them. We're, we've been moving them. We've been adopting them out. We've been moving them out.
That's good.
Yeah, she's been, Rescue's been a big help. 38 the last two months.
How many?
38 the last two months apiece. 38 the last month.
Oh, okay. I know, uh, maybe I'll be wrong here. Last children meeting, 100 and something, the first two and a half months of the year or something that they have, they have moved for us?
Yes.
Maybe we'll get that information next week and then bring it to council. I, I think that's important for folks to know how many dogs or animals are actually moving through.
Right.
All right. Code?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Anything on code?
Slightly, our numbers are pretty even except for on our proper improper disposals, we're way up. The property maintenance were up. Our evertell, evertell column, excuse me, reports are up. For the most part, the rest are pretty average.
On the evertell, that's, uh, those are getting addressed by code or, or by PD if they're able to, correct?
Yes, yes.
Great.
Are your code enforcers, are they both out, Mark and Hanks, or you just have Mark and Marcus and Hanks out?
Yes. So we have.
Both out.
I have him out and she's in the office, now her unit. Her unit broke down about maybe a week and a half, two weeks ago and we had to order a part for her. They got the part. We come to find out the part was good until they pulled the truck up and looked up underneath and realized it was a squirrel They got the part, we come to find out, the part was good, until they pulled the truck up and looked down underneath and realized that a squirrel or a mouse had gotten a hold to the wires. So I got pictures from, from David earlier today, and he said, this is why we're not able to utilize or repair her truck, but this will be. So he's gonna try to repair the wires, do the best he can to get his back. Well, looks like a rat. A rat or a squirrel. Yeah.
He had some dinner, didn't he?
Yes.
Wow.
I've seen that happen a lot. It happens a lot.
Yes, and so that, that was discovered after. Yes.
Wow.
So that's what's been getting her truck.
Anything else for chief?
Well, used in the processing of the wire and then the pack rats.
And the reason I was just asking that is because you know how we're fixing it, implement, or we're working on the other ordinance of, you know, add-on to code enforcement?
Right.
That's why this is having enough manpower to enforce.
Well, we will be once we get vehicles.
Anything else for chief?
These are, that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Moving ahead, municipal court report from the sheriff?
I leave, uh, seventy thousand, it was twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-two cents. Way down from last year. Last year we deposited thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-six. Uh, there was a hundred and twenty-six violations filed, two hundred and forty-six warrants cleared, six hundred and forty cases disposed. And MVV collected four hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents for us. So I'm getting just about down on the MBVA. And, um, still, I won't do a lot.
Will there ever be a time you think that we won't need them, the MBVA?
Probably not. I mean, we're always going to need them. And we only pay on what they do, right?
Okay, yeah.
So I'm pretty much the collection agency myself since I'm.
Right.
So, you know.
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
I'll give you some bench trials.
Uh, let's see, Teal has set a bench trial for next month, and they have all been resolved.
Oh.
Uh, the jury trials have all been resolved as well, so I don't have anything set right now for bench trials.
Okay, well, that's great.
See you and Miss Gabby. Thank you. Moving on to item B is public workers, public work reports, starting with utility billing, consumption and water report.
Okay, and, uh, one report, little meter in deal one. For practical cemetery, three thousand, environment, one hundred and seventy-four. Councilman, councilman members, seven-two, a minority of a hundred and forty-nine. And. We get one water lead, a single test, and seven through calls. And one five-hundred that we have to replace over here on the corner of fine, but we can repair it because we wait in lots of parks. And also for the highway department, we finished the work on, on the, where they got the hole for the valve that we dug out. And also for the cemetery department, I've got installed the lawn mower, uh, for the door. And they should begin it either May or sooner than then.
Are, are mowers now open, running or not?
Uh, we've got four lawn mowers, and only one, only one is running. And the other ones are, they have, they have to work on them. But, uh, I, well, we, the city, but the cemetery department some tools, so they can work on them. So they can help the mechanics, because the mechanics sometimes they have to swam with a trash truck or the police cars. So I took a breath of cemetery department, and he's like, he's willing to like a belt, change a few filters, off filter. So I bought him the tools to do all that.
Part of the plans for the old mowers, when we get our new mowers in, because I know there's no room where they're currently being stored.
We use them at the water department to mow around the well sites and under the water towers and around the storage tanks. So we use, we still use, have whatever life is left on them.
Yeah.
But as far as storing them?
Uh, they just put them outside. Of course, they're set up for weather. But we still utilize them whenever they're on the less leg.
I don't get everything out of them.
Yes.
They're there.
Sanitation and CCS report?
All right. Uh, for sanitation, we have gotten sixty-five trash complaints for February. Some of the trucks, the trucks are still going down, the mechanics, they're doing the best they can to get the trucks going. We did have a driver, uh, in the truck and trailer picking up bags and dumpsters as good as he can do it. And the driver has worked a couple of Saturdays to, to help try to pick the trash up. We do have three trash trucks running. Uh, uh, we were having a welder, in fact, we was having a welder work on one, one truck. And, uh, he finally finished up, so the mechanics just got to, uh, replace, uh, the cylinders on that one. And we should, we should be good to go. Hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have, uh, five, five trucks running. If they finish with a welder, since the welder's finished with that one, and they can finish, uh, they got the, the destination fixed on that one. But it was still making a racket, so they think it's something else with the drop line, the slave cylinder or something is, is out on it. And that's one of those trucks anyway, so. So, but hopefully if everything goes good and we can fix them, you know, we'll have the four running and, and one backup. And I don't have an update on the new trash truck, on the, on the trash trucks, the new ones. And as far as the street, the, the, the crew has been maintaining severalities on the north side of town. We've, they've been putting some bleach in, and doing the roller and trying to smooth it out as good as they can. And, uh, the crew has been working around the, the CCS, and they've been filling up the holes on the, going, on the road, going to the CCS and stuff. We were just more, more or less trying to get it ready for that celebration, I mean celebration, the cleanup day that was coming around and stuff. So it's looking a lot better out there, and I've been working on getting ready for a, a project for the summertime. So, that's all I got.
We're supervising the drivers on Saturday.
Nobody.
It's very apparent, because they're hanging out now.
Oh, yeah.
That cannot happen. We have, we are behind, and we're paying overtime. They need to be working. Not visiting, not hanging out. A lot of the people that were here tonight were here for trash complaints. If we are offering overtime, I expect it to be used wisely. Is anybody using the pet machine yet?
No, I, um, I got ahold of somebody to come train us, well, uh, he's supposed to get ahold of somebody closer to us to come do the training. But they didn't call me back. That was last week, so I gotta try to get ahold of them to see what's going on. He was, he's like an area guy that's not around here, but he's gonna try to find somebody to come over here to go do some training on it.
And, um, May Corina, the county has a juror patcher. And they use it all the time.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I remember.
Curb it and wake.
Those are, those are people that we need to get in touch with.
Get ahold of Robbie Wolf. I got his, I got his contact information.
Thank you, Ms. Hope.
Oh, yes.
The other thing I was gonna ask is the highway on eighteen going out, Fort Jau, on, I believe it's Midland? Did the, is that the state's responsibility? Do they just leave that?
Mm-hmm. I talked to the state about it.
That's not dragable.
That's, uh, yeah, they're, uh, they're waiting for it to get, it's supposed to be around this month or something. Plus, wait for the, the weather to get warm again before, uh, the company, whoever, I forget who's ever done, whoever's doing it, to finish up. I did get ahold of them, was asking them about it. It is rough.
Yes, they left the.
Yeah, you have.
And then cut through, it's awful.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, it's, uh, that's, that's the state department.
Keston Short has a cut and follow-up. I had a meeting with the district engineer, Eric Blackton. And he did tell me that they're aware of that issue currently, and they will really try to get to it as soon as possible. He said, and I said, I know that you get close to completion, appreciate it, really to get completed. He said, no, that's, that's all there is to do.
And when you're, when you're coming in from Jau, they've got that big hump right there? Horrible, horrible.
So he did say that that was, want to thank the Alster, uh, just.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we're exchanging information. Any public comments tonight on any items that were not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I know everybody's tired. I have a short statement. I'd like to speak regarding the council developing an economic development for the city of Trenant. While on the council, I thought this subject up twice. However, I felt it fell on deaf ears. Now that it's being introduced by a man, and the council is considering going into a contract to assess and advise on the subject to the expenditure on the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. I do hope the council takes it under serious consideration for the good of our city and her citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments on agenda items or not on the agenda? Uh, the last, second to the last item, is any comments, concerns, anything from city council, mayor, or city manager? Mr. Mike, you anything?
I just kind of want to bring a few things to your awareness. Uh, I appreciate the comment by Hope to say it was her citizen. I thought that was really cool. I like that. Uh, but I just want you to know that we are applying for a CDVG Downtown Redevelopment Grant. Uh, and that's part of the meeting that we're having next week. We have to have a public hearing in order to have that in place. So you'll see that come up, and we're just gonna try to see what we can do. I can tell you in a conversation that we had with the, uh, the young lady that's doing this grant for us, she did tell us that we will miss ten points because we do not have an economic development corporation. And so if we get fairly close, if we're within ten points, we'll apply again next year. And hopefully by that time, we will have an EDC in place, where we may get some EDC, a Downtown Redevelopment Grant money for that. Um, so I, I'm also trying to seek a public safety grant for some radios for the police department and the fire department. And, uh, the council passed, and the budget passed the ability for the police department to get a repeater. And so, uh, the chief is in the process of getting that order to get it done. But I am gonna have to end up purchasing a repeater for the fire department. I'm not sure if you're aware, which is a scary thought, they get about two miles outside of town, and their radios don't work anymore.
Right.
And so then they get, have to rely on their cell phones. They get out to some of these places that don't have cell phone coverage. So we're not gonna have that. What we are gonna have, though, is a GPS system that we talked about, you know, vehicles. Once that's put on the fire trucks, we'll at least be able to know where they're at. Some GPS coordinates, we can go find them in the event that we need to. But I think it's imperative from a public safety standpoint, from a standpoint of the fact that these volunteer firemen are putting their lives on the line, and we can't keep track of them, and that's a very scary thought. So you'll see coming for you the ability for us to purchase a repeater for the fire department. Um, I have mentioned to you about having a kind of a white warning session to look at our public improvement projects and, and it being more of a capital improvement project. We initially set the date for, I believe it was Tuesday, October six, I'm sorry, Tuesday, April sixteen. Uh, but I think we did have a couple of conflicts, and so I want to see if April eighteenth, Thursday, April eighteenth. I'm sorry, that may be a council. Maybe have it on April the ninth or April the thirteenth. Still keep it on Tuesday, but move it to the week before, the week after. And we're looking at, begin about five-thirty, and it'll probably be, uh, it may end up being about a three-hour session. But it's gonna be kind of go with everything that we need here. Kermit, we can start whiteboarding the projects, looking at potential costs, and looking at timeframes, which will also go in line with the financial advisor being here, uh, and what our body capacity would be for that. And then also, I have had Perko, Smith and Cooper, who's our engineer, say that they will be present also to either provide advice, some, you know, information, or just simply take notes. Uh, and I have been in contact with another engineering firm that could probably do some of the projects. Uh, it's a local, uh, individual that used to, was born and raised here. He lives in Lubbock now. Um, but his name is Carrasco. He's with Kimley Horn.
Ray Carrasco.
Ray Carrasco, I'm sorry. And so he came to see me, and so we may be able to look at, try to get some projects developed if possible. So we'll have that coming up, uh, so if you could let me know whether the ninth is better for you, the twenty-third?
Twenty-third. I can't come on the ninth.
Oh, wait, I already have it for twenty-third. Mark, in my calendar.
Okay, we leave it.
Yeah, twenty-third.
Okay, so if everybody's okay with that, we're just gonna put it for Tuesday, the twenty-third, April twenty-third, we'll have a whiteboard session for that. Um, I, I did mention to you that in December, we had that huge sales tax that I took credit for. Uh, while rescinding that, because this past month, uh, our sales tax, where we had last year received a hundred ninety-one thousand, this year we received thirty-seven thousand. So we had a decrease of about eighty-one percent in our sales tax, and I believe, I've filed an open records request with the comptroller. I believe it may simply be some credits coming back now for the company that filed that big tax, I mean, the, the tax submission. There may be some credits now. I won't know that for sure until I get the information in, but we did have a decrease.
I did, I saw that thirty-seven dollars. I was like, did we not get all our money?
Yeah, thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we'll start seeing some activity taking place early soon on Screw Street. Uh, so we've got all the paperwork done, everything's been finalized. And so now, I believe they're coming out, I think they said next week, to start, begin to start the survey project and get Screw Street done so we can get pavement, concrete, and gutter over on Screw Street for the grant that we received. I, I will tell you also that one of the issues that we're having, which is talked about by the chief, and we all know, the shortage of police officers, one of those is just if we find in somebody, we think that the take-home policy, take-home vehicle policy will help. But also we have a housing issue.
Yes.
Tomorrow, of course, a lot of us are going to, to Pecos for the TML region meeting. Um, I talked to the city manager earlier, and I, I'm gonna be going in early because they have a development, and they put up thirteen double-wide homes at some property near their airport. I'm gonna go out and take a look at it. They are, he did tell me that they're about to embark on a joint venture with some other governmental entities to provide housing for employees, city employees, but county and school as well. They do charge rent, but it's at a very nominal rate. Uh, and so I'm gonna go and take a look to see what they've done, and you may see that coming in as one of our projects to do. Uh, trying to figure out some type of housing that we can provide for police officers to get them here. Uh, and we have some, some city property that we'll be able to put up some things, whether it's a duplex, triplex. If we choose to go with, you know, mobile homes, then that's fine, but we won't be able to put as many in there. So there's gonna be some things that we can do. Uh, and what they're talking about in Pecos are doing townhomes. Uh, and so they do have them, uh, in the double-wide mobile homes, they have it for three years. So it's pretty, pretty much locked them in for three years. Um, the townhomes, they have discussed that they will be able to rent it to them for about two years, and then after that, they have the choice to purchase it. At least get some started as they purchase those townhomes. So it's something that we look at, and I've talked with Mark Valascola, and he did say, yeah, let me start writing some numbers as well. But I think it's a good option from a perspective of trying to get some. That's all I have. We had a demo of asphalt zipper. You go down Campbell, right there in front of the senior citizen center. We did a, kind of a demo there. So it's not, um, it's not pretty, but it is solid. And, uh, it's, it's just a real short, quick demo. I think the mayor was out there, and then Councilman Short showed up also. Uh, it's very interesting how they do that. They mill the pavement, and they go down into the base, and they bring up that dirt as well, and they flatten it. And we sprayed it with some water, we bladed it, and we ran a rotor on it. And I drove by there a couple of times since then, and we can get past the ends where we started and ended, but in the center, it's pretty solid. And so, um, it's just. And so, um, it's just, it just repurposes that stuff and brings it back. So it's pretty cool the way they did it. So we're gonna try to see what it looks like a little further. We did have the city of Odessa that showed up also to view it. They wanna, they said they will come back in a few weeks because they want to see what it looks like also. So it's a very interesting concept of what they're doing, but if, if it works for us, a piece of equipment is about three hundred thousand dollars. But they stated that cities that have purchased this, um, will normally do between five to, uh, seven miles a year. But they'll save anywhere between six to nine million dollars.
Wow.
As opposed to just going through there and repaving those little streets.
He said Fort Stockton's had it five years, I think, and the county, Reeves County or Pecos, somewhere joint efforts had it for a couple of years. So we're gonna maybe make some field trips, see how their streets are holding up.
Yeah, so there, that's all I've got.
Just, just to add to, um, the housing, we, we went to a seminar and, um, I, I gave Mike the information on the, the insurance that we had, it was William Arilla with Bracewell. They also spoke about the housing projects that, that we're gonna reach out to on that.
And you also have in front of you a legislative update that Councilman Short has received, or came out and made you a comment. You've got some really good information on your, uh, legislation.
And, and one more thing they recommended and we already talked about was the emergency management. We're gonna start looking at kind of our policy and stuff, where we stand with our emergency management.
Ms. Judy, you have anything?
Um, no.
Sure, yeah, good, thank you.
Just a reminder, Tuesday, committee, animal shelter committee, five-thirty, invite anybody who wants to give a helping hand.
Ms. Short? Okay, I've only got about fifteen things, uh, right here to cross off my list. No, I'm good, uh, thank you, everybody for being so patient with us, it's ten-thirty, six PM, so I'm not gonna be long with it. One more thing left on the agenda.
Motion, we adjourn?
A second. A motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Ms. Hope?
No.
Ten-thirty-seven PM.
Be ready to go.
Thank you all for being very, very patient.
Zip pasture.